Here we come to order. This is the regular monthly meeting of the Garrett Park Town Council for May of 2025. The first order of business is a statement for the record on a closed meeting of Monday, April 14, 2025. I seek unanimous consent of the council to incorporate the statement for the record by reference in this meeting's minutes. Do I hear any objection? Without objection, so ordered. The next order of business is the oath of office for newly elected council members. And if we will all stand, I would be happy to perform this. All right. If you will raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your full name.
I, Chris Dornstraw.
Do you swear?
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
Support the Constitution and laws thereof.
I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
Best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of council member of the town of Garrett Park.
Execute the office of council member of the town of Garrett Park.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
According to the Constitution and laws of the state.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
The next order of business is approval of the agenda. The agenda has been previously circulated. I will seek a motion to amend the agenda by adding under unfinished business, discussion and authorization to negotiate a contract for consultative architectural services associated with the town hall renovation project. Do I hear a motion to add that to the agenda?
I'll make that motion to add it to the agenda.
Do I hear a second? Second from Councilmember Stroud, correct? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very well, that's been added to the agenda. We now move to a vote on the approval of the agenda as amended. Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We have a quorum. We can therefore move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is essentially a way to streamline the approval of non-controversial items. And tonight's consent agenda contains approval of the regular town council meeting minutes of April 14, as well as the closed meeting minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, and a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving right along. A week ago today, we had a town election. And I would like the Chief Judge of Elections Suzanne Kurt to make a presentation about that.
I'm Suzanne Kurt. As Chris just noted, and I'm really happy to report that we had a very successful election this year. It went off without any glitches. The equipment performed well, no problems there. It seemed like all the poll workers and the judges were very pleased with the results. And the numbers and so forth have already been posted on the website. I won't go over those, but I do have three little points that I'd like to mention that I think will make a very good process even better. And the first has to do with the candidate's forum that was presented by the Citizens Association. Turned out to be, it seemed very, very important for this election. Those of you that were here will recall that it was very well attended here. There was only standing room only here. And then I've been told by our town folks that we had over 80 people viewing the reported, the reported meeting, which was recorded by Montgomery County. So, and many people mentioned it when they came to vote. We heard people talking about it. And folks also picked up the candidate statements that had been published in the bugle. Some folks read those before they were casting their votes on voting day. So my point here is that it was really important and very valuable, but we had it on just the Wednesday before the election. And I've been discussing this with Barb and other folks. And for people who were voting absentee, that put them at a bit of a disadvantage because they would not have been able to assess the positions that were discussed at that very important meeting, which differed in many respects from what the candidates stated in their statements. So our suggestion would be that if that particular really important forum could be held a little bit earlier, that would help with the people who voted absentee. We had, I think around 16 absentee voters this year. Last year we had 30, so it's not, it's not a small number. The second thing I wanted to talk about is ways to improve it so that we could have even more privacy for our voters to be comfortable voting. We were, you know, it's a very small space confined in the post office. And we found this year that especially in the afternoon when the weather turned badly, people were really crowding in the lobby. And it really didn't give the voters, we would like to have more privacy for them. So we're trying to find a way to reconfigure the space so perhaps the display cabinets and some bookshelves can be moved, so we can move it further in there so that not only the two voting booths, but the scanner machines put back in there to give the voters a little more privacy when they're casting their ballots. And the third thing, I've already mentioned this to the mayor, is that it's really dark in there in that little spot where, especially if you're there in the morning before the sun has, you know, come up and in the evening when it's gone down, there's no natural light coming in. So we were suggesting that a little bit more light in there would help make a good situation even better. So that's the report. I'm happy to answer any questions, but really everything went very, very smoothly. And I'd like to also take the opportunity to thank our wonderful town staff for all the help that they did to prepare for the election. There was a lot that goes on behind the scenes, and they did all of it very, very well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And the other judges of election were Louise Domarowski and Joanne Schmader, is that correct? Yeah. And then there were a number of poll workers, and we appreciate all the time you put in as well. As usual, the staff is ahead of all of us and have already begun to explore the installation of downlights, recessed lights in that corner of the post office lobby, which has always been a little, a little dark. It's outfitted with very atmospheric and period appropriate fixtures, but they aren't very good from a pragmatic standpoint.
One point, it's really funny that display case is blocking the back door, and at some point, the guy decided to deliver all the water to the post office.
If you could wait just one moment, do we have any questions or observations from the council?
Jeri Lee has her hand up.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. First, thank you to you and all the election judges for serving as a volunteer for the election to make it go so smoothly. And I was just wondering if you are also sharing your recommendations directly with the Citizens Association Board, since they are the ones who sponsor the election forum? I think it's a great recommendation and an important point for our voters who are usually through no fault of their own having to vote absentee.
Yes, we will definitely be sharing our recommendations with the association. You know, they've been very good about communicating with us all during the spring about selecting dates and so forth. We will definitely be suggesting that an earlier date, if possible, be chosen.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It gives me great pleasure to move along to the next item of business, which is recognition of the service that Todd Eisenstadt put forward in the course of his term in office. Well, again, just for the sake of formality, if I could have a motion to adopt by acclamation the resolution thanking council member Eisenstadt.
I'll make a motion to.
Second?
I'll second that.
Great. I'm going to read it. Todd, why don't you come up? I don't know whether the mic will pick this up. Yeah, just a few. In 19, I'm sorry, 2022. It just seemed like. 2023, Todd Eisenstadt was elected to serve as a member of the town council for the town of Garrett Park. And council member Eisenstadt, who was employed by American University as a professor, brought an unparalleled intellectual curiosity to the position of town council member. He was a proponent of modernizing the town's operational policies and procedures, supporting updates in procurement processes, and the town's fee structure for its various premises and permits. And Todd, during his tenure on the town council, successfully balanced both Garrett Park's short-term needs and long-term priorities to ensure that his neighbors and constituents could continue to enjoy Garrett Park's charms now and into the future. Todd was a strong advocate for responsible public spending, which I personally always appreciate, having our feet held to the fire. He was a model of civility and professionalism, always respectful of the opinions of others, even in disagreement. And as a member of the town council, council member Eisenstadt also helped facilitate the efficient conduct of town business, thoughtfully and concisely getting to the heart of policy matters. He was an active participant in town council matters, even while engaged in business-related or personal travel. Whereas council member Eisenstadt decided not to seek reelection on the expiration of his term this May, and whereas he has been both a colleague and a friend who will be missed by the mayor, his colleagues on the town council, the employees of the town, and town residents, we hereby resolve that the town council, town of Garrett Park, in conjunction with Mayor Keller, extends its sincere appreciation to Todd Eisenstadt for his service as a town council member, and thanks him for his many contributions and dedicated commitment to the betterment of the Garrett Park community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. It was great for your presentation.
I can say me for 20 seconds?
Oh, sure.
If you say that I have an unparalleled intellectual curiosity, if that means that I talk too much, I apologize. I just wanted to say thank you to the town of Garrett Park. It's been a pleasure. I want to thank the very competent staff that we have, council members, an excellent mayor, and it's been a pleasure to serve. I grew up in a town like Garrett Park, but in New Mexico with a post office and a small Karen community. And my parents, who were both public servants, passed away recently. So I think they would be very glad that even if I wasn't in New Mexico, which was their dream, my dream, which brought me here to you, has been in part to honor their service. And so I think they would be proud that I took some time to do that, and I look forward to continuing to serve in whatever capacity I can. And I thank you very much. Have a great week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I always figure if a council member asks questions, they're probably residents who have the same questions. The next order of business is a proclamation declaring June 6th as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the town of Garrett Park. I will not read the whole proclamation. I'll ask again unanimous consent that we adopt it. It was, the movement was begun in this town by former mayor Peter Benjamin, who has taken a longstanding interest in reduction of gun violence. I had a college classmate and fraternity brother who founded Mayors Against Illegal Guns, happy to join. I think it's a worthy enterprise. We will observe it by passing this proclamation and by lighting town hall in orange, which is the color that signifies concern with gun violence. So with that, I will ask for a motion to adopt by acclamation the mayoral proclamation declaring June 6th as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the town of Garrett Park.
I'll make the motion. Go ahead, Jeri Lee.
Either way.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. The next order of business, if I'm reading this correctly, is presentations by residents. Are there any? Mr. Schwartz, will you approach the microphone and state your name and address for the record?
Ken Schwartz, 10919 Claremont Avenue. And that's, I have a comment on the town election. I appreciate the judges' election. I thought it went very, very smoothly. I thought it was friendly, it was efficient. Second Jeri Lee's comments. I do have one concern though, cost. So the price, if I understand it correctly, for the computer assistance is $6,572. Number of voters, 349. Making a simple division, that means the cost per voter is $18.83 per voter. $18.83. That seems to be to be a high number, although lower than in the case of uncontested elections. We've had the computer assistance for over three or four years now. I would suggest, this is not something that has to be brought up at this council meeting, but I would suggest that next year's election, the council may want to consider alternative means rather than the computer assistance. And if it's too much for the judges of election to spend a very long day, I agree it's a very long day, and then counting the votes afterwards, which will take, I'm sure, three hours or more. If, for example, that's a bit too much for the judges of assistance, I'm sure there are other ways they could, they can provide assistance. For example, you have Garrett Park High Schools help with the count of the votes with the supervision of the judges of election. So I just leave it for you for future consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, I'm doing this personally, not as my role as the reporter for the bugle.
Thank you for both. Chuck, would you come forward and use the mic, please? Okay.
Chuck Berry, 11016 Roqueby Avenue. So I noticed in this past week, the town had installed some work along the road in front of my neighbor's house, Jim Cole, which is two houses down. It's adjacent to Wells Park, and I was just kind of wondering what's going on there, if it's going to be longer. I didn't see anything, any presentations or any budget for this work.
You talking about the flagstone?
Yes.
In front of the park?
Yes.
Right. Do you want to know why we did it?
Yes.
Well, as I remember, it was because some of the residents were concerned that kids were getting dropped off on the car side of the road, not on the park side of the road, and could present a safety issue. So the idea was to put some flags in there so that kids could get dropped off on the park side and have a place to stand that wasn't muddy or snowy or rainy or whatever. And that's why we decided to do it. It was for safety of the kids for drop off to the park.
So we're going to extend that 40-foot long pavers all along there?
No. I think the idea was just a landing.
So, but I mean, kids get dropped, people park, that's pretty far away from the entrance. So when cars do, when people do there, and it doesn't happen that often, when the park was initially built, there'll be larger groups of people to come because it was, you know, something new. And it doesn't happen that often, you know, get larger groups. I think there must be some play groups that organize an outing there. So, and then when they do come, very few times that I've seen them come, they do park, you know, further along Roqueby, on the other side of Roqueby, say in front of Ann Sunt's house. So we have land or ground that's not a hardscape over there. So why are we only installing 40 feet in that one location? It looks out of place. Looks kind of wackadoodle to me. It's just, if we're only going to do that one 40-foot segment, why wouldn't we do it in other places?
I don't have an answer. I haven't seen it yet.
What we observed is that when, when there are cars parked on both sides of Roqueby in that stretch essentially paralleling Wells Park, there's really only one travel lane. So when parents let their children out on the street side versus the curb side, it poses a problem. There may be, I mean, you're right, the novelty of the new equipment at Wells Park may be wearing off a little, but there are still people who come from out of town, which is perfectly fine, it's a county park, and park there. We would like to encourage them to let their children off on the curb side instead of the street side. And to do so on the north side, on the Wells Park side, we put down the pavers because it had been mud. And it's hard to encourage parents to drop their kids off on that side if it's muddy. That's not the case on the south side, Ann Sunt's. You can't legislate intelligence, but we would like to at least be in a position to encourage parents to do that. And we felt it would just be easier if we could remove the objection that it's muddy on that side.
Well, if that's the issue, you could put sod over there, like was done actually on the other side of the pavers when they were done. And, you know, occasionally they have parked a little further down. So I'm just curious, why this very unusual looking 40-foot section of it? Okay, I understand what your logic was, but you know, sometimes they go down further. And again, we could use sod. And I'll use another example, say over by your house, Chris, six times a year in the summertime, we have B swim meets and A swim meets, three of each, for a total of six. And there's a lot of cars parked over there, and you do have single-lane roads. So in your case, would you, would you be able to have the pavers put over there along the curbs over there?
Well, there's a sidewalk at my house, so that's taken care of there.
But not the other houses right around in that area?
Well, the short answer is I don't know. If it were brought to our attention, as it was twice, the, what was considered an unsafe circumstance of kids being let out on the street side, if it were brought to our attention, we would certainly consider it anywhere.
So, if the cars see typically on the other side, so you can reach, look back and see the kids. So, I mean, parents have the ability to do, but they feel unsafe by getting them out more of the side with the cars. There's really not a lot of cars that come through there, I mean, to be honest with you.
There only needs to be one.
Well, you could do the same thing over with the pool situation. A lot of people are trying to get to the swim meet, they're parked on both sides of the road, there's only one lane. So, and you'd call it a sidewalk. It's a sidewalk with these, what we put in, installed there, that 40-foot stretch?
No, I didn't call it a sidewalk. It's a series of cast concrete pavers. Well, so what's your recommendation that we take it out?
Well, I'm just, I'm just confused on why we didn't just put in that 40-foot section. It just looks so out of place.
Because that's, that's, that's the place, that's the place where the town was put on notice twice that there's an unsafe condition.
Yep. And it might have been, it was brought up during either the winter, I think in the early winter. So it might be that the conditions for the swim meet are in the summer where all the mud and muck isn't a problem.
I mean, it rains and you get muddy, and that's it. You could, you could easily install sod. If you look at the picture, once we had the asphalt curb, and the 23-foot pavers were put there.
Right.
Then they had some soil inside because it was a little bit high. And, I mean, it looks like a sidewalk. And if it's a sidewalk and people are walking on like a sidewalk, it doesn't need ADA, it's only 23 inches wide sidewalks. ADA requires three-foot wide sidewalk. There's no ramps, if people have their strollers, or a handicap kid gets out there on that side because the parents don't want to put them in the road. The town's installing work that doesn't need ADA, and if you use public funds, you have to install things per ADA.
So you're suggesting that they be removed? You're suggesting that they be removed? Okay, we'll take it under advisement.
I'll definitely go look at it.
Any further presentations from residents? If there are none, Barbara, would you care to present your town manager's report?
And I would just remind everyone, please talk into the mic. Councilmember Shulpa is indicating that he's having trouble hearing people. So it's included in your agenda packet is the financial report for the month of April. Just a couple of things I wanted to note is during the month of April, we did receive quarterly interest payments from the Montgomery County Investment Pool, as well as M&amp;T Advisors. Those receipts were posted in April and totaled almost $23,000 combined. Also reflected in the April financial report in account 13.5, which is trees, parks, and grounds, was a payment in the amount of $15,870 to Empire Landscape for tree removals in various locations. I would also note relative to that account is Empire is out doing work. They started on Friday and also will be continuing that work in the week. And that's mostly printing work, there are two removals. Then last week, as I mentioned in my report last month, the cost of outfitting the new pickup truck that we received in February came in a little bit higher than anticipated. So there was a negative balance of $489 in account 25.0, equipment, and a transfer in that amount was made by our accountant from the contingency account to address that shortfall. On May 5th, we had the pleasure of welcoming the newest addition to the town staff, Giovanni, who goes by Gio. Vanessa started work as the newest member of our maintenance team. Gio was selected from over 350 employees for the maintenance division. And we're thrilled to have him on board, and I'm sure George and Frank in particular. And, uh, we're thrilled to have him on board. And I'm sure George and Frank in particular are thrilled to have, um, be back to full staffing again. Uh, during the month of April, we closed out the contract with SFMS LLC for the Road and Sidewalk Improvements Project. The total cost of the project ended up being $300,136.75. And as a reminder, the project was paid for with funding received under the American Rescue Plan Act. Included in your agenda packet is the latest report from Wheaton Architects, and just detailing the progress that they are making on the design development phase activities for the Town Hall renovation project. As a reminder, um, the goal of design development is to get to 50% construction drawings. Um, so there will still be work after that. Uh, Mayor Keller and I have a call with Wheaton Architects in the morning, um, just to go over a few things that are noted in the report.
Barb, any idea when the lights are going to go in on Waymouth and the trees?
You're talking about Waverly?
Waverly, yes.
Um, it will probably be mid-July. So the order was placed in, um, early March and it's about a sixteen to seventeen week timeframe.
Okay. Thank you.
Barb, yeah, the email from the architect, he's got a bunch of questions. Do those rise to the level of needing full council discussion or those the type of thing you?
Sure. What was, um, discussed previously, and I think Mayor Keller will be talking about this a little bit later in the meeting, um, was that there would be a subcommittee consisting of, um, at that time, Mayor Keller, former councilmember Pasowski and myself, um, who would try to respond to issues, um, that were more minor in nature or technical in nature. Um, and that through this report and through oral reports at the meetings, we would keep you all updated on how things were progressing. So certainly things that are particularly sensitive, um, would come back to the whole group. Um, back in December, the town council authorized execution of a contract with EAI Security Systems um, associated with the replacement and upgrade of the fire alarm system in the Penn Place building. Um, the system is so old that there are, um, no longer new replacement parts. We have to actually buy used ones. Um, and we have been seeing a steady increase in false alarms um, due to the sensor failures. Um, so that contract was authorized back in December, as I mentioned. Um, EAI Security Systems began work today. Um, for Suzanne's benefit, they actually wanted to start work last Monday, and I figured with the election, that would not be a very good idea. Um, so they started work today. Um, they will complete the installation in about two weeks and then it, um, basically the system will need to be tested and approved by Montgomery County. Um, similar to the sidewalk and road improvements project, um, the replacement of the fire alarm system at Penn Place is being paid for uh, with federal funding received under the American Rescue Plan Act. Um, this will sound familiar to our more tenured members of the elected body, but as I reported back in January, uh, we have been experiencing significant issues with the use of the two Google Group listserv, GPML and the town forum. And these are the primary ways we, um, rely upon to communicate and share information with our residents. Some of the problems we have experienced, which are not unique to Garrett Park in term, I've gone out to some of the user groups. Um, for example, when Mayor Keller was elected last May, the mayor has always had posting privileges um, to GPML as well as town staff. Um, we were unable to add his town government email address, um, to either GPML or the town forum. Um, also, for whatever reason, I am actually an account owner for these accounts, but Google decided that, uh, there was a problem with my town government email address and it has disabled me from posting. Um, so that's why you haven't seen me on either listserv for, um, some time. Um, and additionally, we have had several instances where we have been unable to add a town resident who does not have a Gmail account. So these problems, based on what I've, I've been seeing in the user groups, is not unique, um, to Garrett Park. Um, so we basically have been exploring other options as a way to communicate with residents. Um, we keep waiting for the other shoe to drop and Kayla perhaps to go next and not be able to post or anything. Um, so we, I reached out to some of my colleagues and some of the other municipalities, smaller municipalities in Montgomery County. Um, and basically the platform that kept coming up is called Constant Contact. Um, anyone who has worked in media may be familiar with that. It's a very common platform um, in the media realm. Um, but Constant Contact is used by Chevy Chase Section Three, Chevy Chase View, Martin's Editions, and North Chevy Chase. Um, City of Rockville also uses it for some outreach that it does. Um, I know that as a former employee. So we've taken some preliminary steps to, um, kind of transition to Constant Contact. Kayla is running late on that. I don't know Kayla, if there's anything you want to share?
I can say that the policy for town communications has always been that council members, the mayor and town staff have the ability to share on GPML. One of the things we did consider very important when we were looking at alternatives was having a platform where we could set up the elected body to directly communicate with residents if they want to continue. Let's say Councilmember Bennett's great advocacy for the Spring and Fall Tree Walk, which is coming up in a few weeks. We want you to be able to directly communicate with your neighbors in a way that is also recorded for our records retention policy. That is part of what drew us to Constant Contact. Um, the way we currently have all of our communication data, all of our contact for residents, it's not in a format that will easily upload to Constant Contact. So there is some cleaning up of the data as I go. It's taking some time, but my hope is that in the next few weeks, sooner if I can, I can email all of you, your individual kind of login credentials and kind of a quick how-to guide so that as you have events come up, whether it be town events, county events, or other things of interest, you have the tools to directly communicate to a wide group of your neighbors.
Is there a cost different from Google Groups to go to Constant Contact?
Yes, um, it is just under $200 per month for the platform style that we're using. We did look at the difference between a standard kind of out of the box commercial account versus a multi-account platform. But coming back to that ability to allow you and your elected colleagues to directly communicate with residents as well as retain a structure where we can record the communications as we are required to by state law, a multi-account setup worked better for us. So we did reach out to Constant Contact, get some pricing for that.
So it's $200 a month for unlimited numbers of users and unlimited amount of?
So not unlimited number of users. So for up to 10 users, which more than covers staff and elected officials, $200 for up to a number of communications. We did look at kind of what we pay for Zoom, for other communication tools. $200 in our mind is reasonable to make sure that if we need to alert people to, you know, bad road conditions, a tree coming down, something that actually gets out to people. We also are under a bit of an unknown time constraint. As Barb alluded to earlier, she was kind of kicked out of the group rather abruptly. For now, myself and Jeanette Lipton-Walner still have posting privileges across both groups, but we are also very aware that a number of Google users across different organizations have reported getting booted from their groups. So we're just kind of waiting for the day that I go to send out the meeting agenda and it tells me that I am no longer allowed to do so. So our hope is that we're done before that happens.
What, I might be confusing my groups and I was one of the ones that took a while to get added. With Constant Contact, users can't receive an email and reply.
Yes.
Right, but that is, so that would be a big difference with the way.
Yes. So unfortunately, we're not going to have that ability to have kind of an immediate reaction and ongoing communication the way we see in the forum. You will still be able to, like if I email Suzanne a notice of, hey, you live on a street where we'll be doing roadwork next week, she'll be able to respond directly to me. If she wanted to opt out of, let's say, roadwork communications, but continue to receive only election communications, we do have the ability, Constant Contact refers to it as segments. We've been calling it kind of our subgrouping in the office. That was another tool that we wanted to make sure we had so that we could target if we have another Chevy house that has been purchased and the new owner is making available some salvage material. We only want to reach out to Chevy house owners because we don't think folks living in a non-Checa house would necessarily be interested with that. So we do think that our current plan, and Town Manager Matthews can jump in at any point. I believe our current plan is to turn over the forum in its entirety to the Citizens Association. A request for greater access to that had come through many moons ago. Because the important thing to notice is if you have a Gmail account, it seems to be operations as normal. We have not had any reports from residents. They have gone to send out a request for roofing recommendations and gotten bounced back. This is really just, there's something about the .gov emails that Google doesn't like. And unfortunately, we can't just not talk to residents. That's kind of a key element of what we do.
Yeah, the way I realized that there was a problem is I went to send out something to the listserv and it bounced back. And then when I went into the account, it basically, Google had disabled my town government email address. That's what happened. Um, I think we got, Jeri Lee had her hand up, but she's taking it down and Phil has his hands up. I'm sorry.
Oh, is it, is Phil?
Yeah, I can't tell if that's Phil. But go ahead.
I would, um, if it gets to that point and the time comes, we will want to consider. That's a big change for folks who are used to receiving an email, government-related email from the council and responding and engaging in immediate conversation. So we'll want to think through how to help people understand the added benefit of doing it this way and the fact that now that type of communication takes place on the Citizens Association forum, because that's, that's a big change for folks.
Yeah, um, GPML has obviously always been a one-way communication, as you may know. So I think for those who have been receiving communications from the town government that way, nothing will change. Um, but we certainly were just, um, kind of just starting this process now. So we, um,
I've got some experience with Constant Contact too, so happy to talk with you.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
So the question I had was how many users, how many receivers can we have on the mailing list?
In terms of those receiving communications, Phil?
Correct.
Yes. So they do tiered pricing. When looking through the number of town residents we had across both GPML and the forum and recognizing that a number of those residents are subscribed to both and talking it through with the Constant Contact team to figure out what was actually appropriate for our needs, the accounts we have, each individual sub-account, which is what US officials would have, can have up to 500 contacts that you reach out to at our current pricing level. If we suddenly tip over into 520 people who need to get the communications, you're still going to be able to do that. We're just going to tip into a slightly higher pricing tier. Um, I went to say we currently have four hundred and under, four hundred and thirty under distinct email addresses across both lists. So I don't think we are likely to hit that 500 at any point in the near future unless there is some sort of rapid and exponential growth in people who want Garrett Park news. But I don't necessarily see that happening.
Jeri Lee, did you have a question? I know you had your hand up earlier.
Well, my main question was I was curious about the, what would happen with the forums, so that got answered. But I guess it wasn't entirely clear to me. Were we not paying anything for the Google services? Did we just have free services? So is that price increase the price increase or is it the total cost?
It is the total cost. We had not previously been paying for the Google group. What I suspect has potentially happened across a number of Google groups, because as Barb alluded to, she's not the only person experiencing this. There's a number of Google user support forums that have similar complaints of people being abruptly booted. I think Google made it very free and accessible and then realized that they had taken on something of a significant cost when you factor in all the Google groups that exist and decided to kind of crack down on non-Google users who are in these groups.
And I'm sure part of it is just trying to drive people to Google's email system. Um, yeah, and going through the, the user forums, trying to figure out what happened with my own, um, account. It, we were not the only ones experiencing it. It wasn't just .gov. It was anyone who did not have a Gmail account, essentially. Um, Google did have, I would say, an opportunity, using that term very loosely, that you could report a problem and try to get information. Um, I did go through that exercise and, um, pretty much I just got, I think they said we would get back to you if we had anything to say to you, and they apparently never did. So.
So is, we're using Outlook now?
Well, Outlook is the town, um, the internal email system.
And we're going to continue to use that?
Yes, yeah. These are two separate things.
Okay, thank you.
There's no other questions about that. I just wanted to mention in terms of our maintenance team, they did complete the spring's tree planting. Um, obviously it's a very busy time for them, which is, you know, mowing and mulching as well as watering the recently planted trees. Um, the last item I wanted to mention relative to our maintenance staff is, um, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, in mid-February, we received our newly purchased pickup truck. Um, Maintenance Supervisor George Miller listed the old truck for sale on the government auction site, Public Surplus. That auction closed on April 20th. And the old truck sold for $17,798. Um, but that is not reflected in your April report because the auction proceeds were received during the month of May. That concludes my report unless there's any questions about anything.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeri. Jeri Lee has her hand up.
Yes, uh, Barb, I wanted to ask if we have any plans for, uh, marking, no parking areas around the intersection of Argyle and Kennelworth. When we first, uh, installed the new median there to improve that, the traffic flow and safety at that intersection, uh, we talked about the need to, um, restrict parking at the top of Argyle on the, on the, uh, northbound side, um, well, actually on both sides of the corner. And then also directly across at the T on Kennelworth. So I just wanted to know what the plan was for that. Um, we have, I've had several residents complain about, um, the pedestrian safety and sightlines there because of parked cars.
Um, I think the last discussion we had about it, Jeri Lee, was to sort of wait for the new intersection to sort of settle in and see how people got used to it. Um, I will discuss that with George Miller in the morning. Um, I know there was at least one space that he and I had talked about previously. What would be the equivalent of one parking space that probably should be posted for no parking? So let me, let me touch base with him and see what he's seeing out in the field.
Okay, thank you.
Phil, you think you have your hand up?
Yes. Um, so what I was wondering is, do we need to make an adjustment to the budget that we're looking at um, to accommodate the $2,400 or possible $2,400 if we choose to go to Constant Contact?
That would probably be helpful. Um, it was not something that was in your original budget because we were still examining options at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up, Phil.
When, when we need to actually make a decision on that? Are you, are you still in the sort of investigative stage or?
I reached out to, um, a whole slew of other municipalities and that was the platform most of them are using. If they weren't doing that, I think there was one, I think it was Chevy Chase Village, that was doing something through its website. But everyone else that I spoke to used Constant Contact.
I guess what I'm asking is when, when do we need to make a decision that would involve a commitment of funds?
Um, I would say very soon because at this point, like I say, my, I went from being able to post to having my email, town government email address disabled overnight, basically.
Okay.
Um, so there's kind of no rhyme or reason to what's happening.
So it's a function of the risk we take.
Yeah.
All right.
Could you get a Gmail account and then solve the problem?
The issue is that when, when town government officials post, like when I was able to do that, we are required for legal and archival reasons to, um, basically maintain copies of our communications. So when I was posting to GPML or the town forum, or Kayla is doing it, that communication is captured and, um, maintained for posterity's sake in accordance with state law because it was coming from my government email address. If I was doing something from a Gmail address, that is not going through, um, the archiving system. You'll periodically receive something from a company named Smarsh, and for Chris and John's benefit, you will start getting those too. That is the legal kind of archiving thing to make it easier to search. So that's the problem with getting, using a personal email address um, for anyone. Um, because if any of you are using your personal email address for government communications and there is either a Public Information Act request or the town engages in litigation, your personal devices and your personal accounts are therefore subject to search. So that's the biggest problem, Lisa. Um, if we're required by law to maintain it.
Okay.
Anything further on the town manager's report? All right, we will move to action items beginning with adoption of ordinance number 2025 dash four, uh, which is essentially adoption of the FY25 budget. And by way of background, I will just observe that under the town's charter, we need to adopt each annual budget as an ordinance. under the town's charter, we need to adopt each annual budget as an ordinance, which means it's subject to the rather cumbersome and certainly lengthy process that requires introduction, uh, and adoption at separate meetings. And then there's a delay before the effective date, adding up the fact that our fiscal year begins July 1 and the built-in time periods for any, uh, ordinance process. We have to start the budget process fairly early with sometimes not complete data, especially with respect to where we've stood in terms of, um, the prior year. Um, and there, which, which has implications for the carryover and so on. This budget is introduced, contained last month, contained, um, everyone's best estimates and projections as to revenue and expenditures. Uh, as detailed in Barb's memo, uh, it is necessary to, um, amend the budget that was introduced last month in order to bring some of the figures to more current, uh, projections. Uh, that's a perfectly acceptable process so long as the amendments do not fundamentally change the entire scope of the budget. So the process we will observe today is to introduce, um, or, or move to adopt ordinance number 2025-4 as introduced. And I will then, and so will require a motion to second. I will then add, ask Barb to give us the background information. We will then entertain an amendment to the ordinance as introduced to bring the figures, uh, to the amounts shown in her circulation to us. And then we will adopt the ordinance as amended. So let's start. Uh, I will entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 2025-4.
I'll make the motion to adopt ordinance 2025-4 for adoption.
Thank you. A second?
I will.
It's, it's been moved and seconded, so it's on the table for discussion. Barb, if you would, uh, summarize your memo to us with respect to the amendments that need to be made.
Yes, certainly. Um, so in attachment two in your agenda packet, there are certain figures that are highlighted, which are, um, the figures I was recommending be amended. I'll give you a very brief explanation of why. I'm recommending that the prior year carryover amount, which is account 1.0 be increased from the current 119,700 to 133,500. This is based on my review of the revenue and expense data as of April 30th as well as a suggested, um, suggested changes in FY26 revenues and expenses. Um, I'm recommending that investment earnings, which is account 5.1 be increased from 110,000 to 115,000. And discussing this with Mary Ruck, our accountant, um, neither one of us is seeing, uh, any movement on the part of the Federal Reserve in the short term to lower interest rates in the near future. So those would be the revenue changes. Um, on the expense side for account 13.1 Penn Place, I'm recommending an increase from 53,000 to 56,000. Um, hopefully this will come in less expensive, but this funding, additional funding, if approved, would be utilized to enhance lighting in the first floor lobby area, particularly near the elevator. Um, the more tenured members of the elected body probably recall that we did, went through the exact same exercise on the third floor of Penn Place. It was very, very kind of dark and dingy. Um, so the fact that the lighting was very dim was brought to my attention by one of our poll workers when I was, um, seeking feedback after the election. This would not only benefit just the election, which is obviously only one time a day, but we also have the, um, archives exhibit display case, which is probably equally difficult to see, um, uh, especially during the winter time when it gets dark so soon. Um, account 13.3 maintenance facility is proposed to be increased from $4,750 to $6,750. I don't recall whether, um, Mayor Keller or I explicitly addressed this, um, last month. But the budget as it stands today for FY26, um, includes $2,000 in this account to support the purchase of a storage shed for use by the Citizens Association. The additional requested funding in the amount of $2,000, if approved, would provide for the pouring of footings, a CMU block base, as well as the purchase of an eight-by-10 shed.
Where is it going to go?
It would go, um, if approved, we have to get a historic area work permit. It would go behind the maintenance building.
Okay.
Um, and the, what is envisioned at this time, and Mayor Keller can certainly speak to this in more detail as necessary, is that the town would enter into a lease agreement with the Citizens Association, a long-term lease, um, to rent that back to them. Um, I did check in with the county historic preservation staff. Essentially the entire, um, property that encompasses the Penn Place building and the maintenance building um, is subject to county historic preservation review. So we will need to get a historic area work permit if this funding is approved.
For the shed?
Mm-hmm. We need to get, um, go through that exercise. Uh, council membership, um, thank you for your earlier comment. If the, um, you know, council is supportive of adding in some funding for an alternative communications platform, that would likely go to account 11.7, which is IT operations. Um, that's where we also book a lot of our, um, software expenses. Kayla and I were just consulting, um, that 11.7 should probably go up by $2,500 just in case we do tip over 500 users. And what that would, if that additional $2,500 were to be added to account, um, 11.7, um, if you're looking at attachment to the operations page, um, that would increase the, um, the amount that would be, um, I'm sorry, that actually goes in the wrong direction. The 427, um, would go down by 2,500. And then if you look at the capital, basically there would be a little bit less, um, going to capital because of that 2,500, which would then increase the amount needed from contingency. So that would go up to, um, 3,700.
Barb, does this budget include the income from that little office space in Penn Place?
It does.
Okay, good.
Yes, it's a year-long lease.
Great.
So, um, is it the import of what you've just said that we should also amend 11.7 in addition to the ones you've highlighted in yellow?
Yes, and my apology, I'm glad, I appreciate, um, council member Scholl recognizing that, yes, I would say so if, um, you are supportive of putting in funding or whether it's Constant Contact or some other mechanism.
So it would increment to?
128,185.
128?
128,185. So if we're adding 2,500 to the current 11.7, we would go from 125,685 dollars to 128,185 dollars.
Okay.
And then the, um, as I mentioned, the transfer to capital would be reduced by $2,500.
That would then drop down to 425,173 dollars.
And then the last number that would change, once again, all these are in attachment two, is if you go to the capital page in attachment two, the 33.0 contingency, um, right now there would be $1,200 taken from contingency. That number would increase to 3,700.
Uh, I'm sorry, the line number again?
Um, it would be, um, account 33.0 contingent, capital contingency. And that number, it's a, it's a deduct, um, number because funding would be taken from contingency, um, would go from a deduction of 1,200 or withdrawal from contingency of 1,200 to 3,700.
All right. We, unless there's discussion at this juncture, the next procedural step should be to, uh, have a motion, and I will entertain a motion to amend the introduced ordinance, as reflected in attachment two, yellow highlighted lines plus line 11.7 incrementing to 128,185. Line 20.0 incrementing, uh, diminishing to 425, 173?
Yes.
And line 33.0.
I would go from minus 1,200 to minus 3,700.
Minus 3,700. Right.
I will, uh, so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. We now have before us moved and seconded. Ordinance number 2025-4 as amended. I will need a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-4 as amended.
I'll make that motion to adopt.
Uh, that may be superfluous, but let's get it anyway. Lisa, moved. Is there a second? Thank you. Uh, is there discussion of the?
Mayor Keller, can I ask for clarification? It sounded like one of our new council members moved to second that motion, but I could not tell whom it was.
It was council member Stroud, but it may have been superfluous actually. But now, excess of caution, we have before us the, um, introduced ordinance as amended tonight. Uh, is there any discussion before I call for a vote? Anyone out there in the ether? No? All right.
I'm good.
I'm good as well.
Okay. I will, uh, call for the, uh, ayes and nays, all in favor of adopting ordinance number 2025-4 as amended.
Aye.
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 All right, unanimous. Thank you. We'll spend it wisely. That brings us to the next order of business, which is introduction of ordinance number 2025-5, amending chapter four of the town code with respect to various, um, building permit procedures and other, uh, procedural matters. This subject has been before us in various guises for, uh, at least three, maybe four months. And most of the discussion has centered around various substantive provisions having to do with setback standards. Also, in the discussion, but so far as I know, um, unobjected to, have been a number of procedural requirements with respect to construction requirements, um, in connection with the, uh, uh, grant of a permit. We still need to have a comprehensive discussion about the substantive land use provisions. The ones here are specific to setbacks, but they include such things as height, which are applicable to other land use elements. I'm going to propose that we have that discussion in a workshop at which we can take advantage of various resources, such as the chair of the Land Use Committee and others. But meanwhile, uh, more recent developments have heightened our concern with, um, just the operational elements, uh, of the, of the land use statute, primarily construction requirements. And those are set out at section seven. It's, uh, page four of attachment one. In view of the, of the fact that certain of our residents have had to, um, put up with byproducts of construction that, um, might be addressed by our getting this on the books and the fact that they haven't really been subject to any objection so far, I suggested that we strip out the land use elements for consideration later and simply adopt these, um, conditions of, of permit that bear on construction. They essentially mirror county standards. This on the table for discussion and get, um, town manager Matthews to summarize her, her background memorandum. So I will entertain a motion for introduction of ordinance number 2025-5, amending chapter four of the town code.
I'll make the motion.
All right. Thank you. And is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Barbara, do you want to add to, I was sort of dribbling on with my introduction.
No, no, I, I think you've covered it very well, um, Mayor Keller. Um, we have talked about this a number of times, but I think particularly for, um, council member Deutsch and council member Stroud, they may have some questions about why certain things are included in the ordinance. And if so, I'd be happy to address those.
We, it, it sounds to me like the idea here is there's, there's some elements that maybe require a little more conversation, but there's also elements of this that could be passed now. Have a very real immediate effect on people who are experiencing some, uh, disruption due to some of the construction practices. Is that right? You know, things like when hours that construction can take place and where debris can be put and.
That's correct. So some of this is, um, codifying longstanding town practices, but in the absence of those being formalized in the code.
Right.
It, it does limit the town's ability should we need to, um, issue a notice of violation, take someone to court. Beyond that, there are some, um, you'll see, and I'm going to just refer to attachment one. There are also some, some other changes, obviously, um, the, talking to the chair of the Land Use Advisory Committee. We've had a longstanding practice of how we calculate floor area ratios or gross floor area. Um, that has sometimes come up, um, with certain architects in dispute. So basically it's taking that practice and putting in the code. So there's no ambiguity about how the town is going to handle those things. Um, going to page three, um, the town has issued, um, permits. Uh, we at least issue a town letter for fences. Um, certain walls of a certain height that are not subject to the county as well as swimming pools, but we have no substantive regulations. regarding those items. So you'll see those kind of scattered throughout the code, particularly on page 5, Section 402, to basically actually set some standards for those activities. Those, once again, were developed with the guidance of the Chair of the Land Use Advisory Committee. Some other substantive changes is that we, this ordinance would require the submission of a plat or survey of sufficient accuracy for the town to determine if any existing or proposed improvements would encroach into any required setback. And it would also require those same submissions, basically if you're located within two feet of a setback line, then you also need to include a boundary survey. So it's basically trying to have the information in hand to actually abide by and be able to measure the town, you know, that we're actually not granting a permit. If there's any other substantive changes besides those that the mayor and I have discussed. Probably one of the bigger ones is on page 4, it's at the very bottom of the page, which is subsection 9. We do not currently have any provision in our code requiring a right-of-way restoration bond, which is fairly common practice. So beginning at the bottom of page 4 on to page 5, it would basically set forth that process. The actual amount of the restoration bond will be adopted by resolution, and at that time, because this has come up before in discussions that the Town Council has had, that resolution would basically give you all the ability to determine what type of construction activities would trigger the need for a restoration bond. But essentially what this section would do is if we, we'd have the restoration bond, if within 15 days of a demand by the town that someone restore an area, and they do not fail to do that, they could either pay us or basically, we can basically trigger the bond. There was a question at, I believe it was the March meeting of whether someone could post a letter of credit. Typically, even though it has a word bond in it, restoration bonds are typically paid in cash so that you don't get into an argument with the bonding company as to whether or not there's been a breach or default.
Who decides the amount of the bond?
You all will set that by resolution.
Okay.
Also on page 5, this was an addition that Mayor Keller had requested in this version of the ordinance. Basically anytime there is an hearing before the Town Council for the issuance of any demolition permit. The change that is proposed on page 5, subset, it's C subsection 2, would basically require that, that hearing be publicly noticed at least 20 days prior to the hearing date. This is parallel to what we are now doing for variance applications as well. So it's kind of setting those two things together. Trying to think if there's anything else that would be, you'll see if you flip to page 9, that's where you'll start seeing some of the substantive requirements for fences or swimming pools, which once again, we were at the benefit of the input from our Chair of the Land Use Advisory Committee. On, still on page 9 as well. If you see Section 405B, currently there is actually nothing on the books that references a stop work order, so this would added an explicit authorization in the Town Code for the issuance of a stop work order, and also provide that any violation of a stop work order would constitute a municipal infraction, subject to a fine of $1,000 initially, and then any continued violations of a violation of that stop work order would basically go to $500 a day thereafter. So those are kind of the substantive requirements beyond the operational issues that the mayor mentioned, such as, you know, construction hours, things of that nature.
And as with any law of this sort, one hopes that it simply establishes the incentive and that we don't have to actually enforce it, but if we do, we need the tools.
Actually, Mayor Keller, Carol just pointed something out, I just want to correct this. So a violation of a stop work order would be $1,000. That section on page 9 then states that any violations of any other provision of the chapter would be $500. It's currently $100.
All right, any further discussion? And I think I heard the word immediate relief somewhere along there. This won't be immediate, we'll have to vote it in next meeting and it will become effective in late June or early July, depending on what the.
Caveat to that potentially, Mayor Keller. So we are required, under the Land Use Article, to submit this ordinance prior to adoption to the County Council, at least 30 days before its adoption. There are only 28 days between this meeting and the June meeting. I will send this to the County Council tomorrow. My hope is that they will review it, don't wait till the 30th day. But if for some reason they do that, that could hold up its, its adoption until the July meeting, potentially. Hopefully not, but I did just want to flag that.
Any further discussion? I'll ask for a vote on the question of introducing ordinance number 25-5, building permits, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any want to vote? Very good, unanimous, thank you. We now go to unfinished business, the first of which is transitioning the Parks and Open Space Committee from an ad hoc mayoral committee to a statutory committee. Barbara, do you want to start the background on that?
Yes, thank you. So as many of you know, there has been on and off an ad hoc Parks and Open Spaces Committee. In those instances, the members were appointed solely by the mayor. Most recently, Mayor Keller announced back in May upon his election that he was reconstituting the committee and he subsequently appointed five town residents to serve on it. At the last meeting in April, Councilmember Max requested that staff draft an ordinance to make the Parks and Open Spaces Committee a statutory codified committee, as the mayor mentioned. During the discussion on that date, staff asked for clarification on a couple of things to, to assist us in drafting the ordinance. We were advised to keep the committee at its present five members, have the terms be three years, and have broad eligibility standards. And at the conclusion of that discussion on April 14th, it was agreed that town staff would develop a draft ordinance for review and discussion, as well as sharing that copy of the draft with the current members of the Parks and Open Spaces Committee. So included in your agenda packet is a draft ordinance that would amend Chapter 14. Mayor Keller had requested, as he and I were discussing this, that the draft ordinance use the name Parks Advisory Committee. That's obviously, you know, one of the discussion points that you all may want to talk about. A copy of this draft ordinance was shared with the members of the committee, and each of you received feedback from one of those members about some elements of this. So much of the language that you're seeing in the draft ordinance mirrors kind of how our other committees work. There would be five committee members, our committees vary anywhere from seven to five members. In keeping with our typical practice, a member of the Town Council would serve as a non-voting liaison to the committee. As is the case with all of our committees that are statutory, the mayor would appoint with the approval of the council members of the committee. And our typical standard is that committee members would be town residents who have lived in Garrett Park for at least a year. Members, as I mentioned, would be appointed for a term of three years, except there would probably be some staggering in making the initial appointment so that we didn't have everyone kind of going off or coming up for renewal at the same time. And any member of a committee could be removed by the mayor with the approval of the council if they fail to attend meetings regularly. That has not been a problem to date from, thankfully for most of our committees. The members of the committee would serve without compensation, but certainly if they incur any expenses in their service on the committee, those would be reimbursable. The Town Council, as it does each year, would, you know, allocate whatever funds it deems necessary in the town's annual budget to support activities of the committee. The Chair and Vice Chair of the committee would be elected by its own members, and they would be able to adopt their own procedural rules to guide how they work.
You can skip the next one.
Okay, okay, I will leave that alone.
We'll return to that in a moment.
Yeah, so one of the things I just, I will kind of call out here, and I think the note that I shared with you from one member of the committee, I did include in this draft that, to the extent possible, that the committee's membership should be reflective of the town's demographics. My thought in, in including that, which is not a standard provision for most of our committees, is that I think dealing with parks is a little bit different. How you experience a park is very different if you have toddlers versus if you have teenagers versus if you have no kids or if you're a senior. So I personally felt that this committee was a little different than some of our others, and that having that kind of broad representation and always in my estimation was important just to have those different viewpoints recognized. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Did you get any comments from this draft that you sent to the people who were on the Parks and Open Space Committee?
There was one member of the committee who did send some comments in.
I saw that.
Yeah, that was, those were the only comments that I received. I did see earlier this evening, there was a member of the committee in attendance, but he has left and I do not see him online. So it was just that one set of comments is the only thing that I received.
And, and no follow-up to what you, the explanations you provided?
No. None. Gerald Lee, did you have some comments? I see your hand up.
I was wondering what the transition plan for the current membership of the committee would be to the new tenured, you know, the new tenure, staggered tenures of the committee once it's formalized.
Well, I think once this, if this ordinance were to be adopted, then Mayor Keller would bring forward, you know, his proposed members for the committee, and it would be subject to the approval process like other committee appointments are.
It would be subject to what?
But, well, there would not be an automatic transition. We would advertise this just as we do when members' terms on committees expire now. We, we advertise it, the expectation is that a current member of the committee has a a certain degree of experience that would certainly count toward their appointment. But we will appoint this as a, as a new committee with staggered terms. And we'll see who comes forward and expresses interest.
After the people who were on the committee's terms expire?
No, there are no expiration terms. The, the current committee serves at the, at the pleasure or whim of the mayor. And a major impetus behind this current discussion is formalizing it in such a fashion that the committee existence does not depend on the whim of the mayor.
But what I'm trying to understand is, we've got a pretty active group of four or five people on the Parks and Open Space Committee now.
Yes.
So what happens to them? If we adopt this resolution?
Well, if they want to, if they want to be considered for appointment
They would apply.
To the committee, they would apply.
Okay, thank you.
Phil, or Phil too?
Phil or both. So I really think we need to reword or even remove this whole thing about the extent possible, membership should be reflective of town's demographic, because to me, it's, could be discriminatory. It's vague, and while I understand what its point is, I think a lot of objections could be had from any number of groups. Maybe there's a better way of phrasing it, but there's no other committee that has this. And since it's up to the council to approve the new members, whoever they may be, and the mayor to look over and propose them, I would like to see this removed and replaced with language that's similar to what we're using with the other committees, because I just think it's discriminatory and too vague.
Can I, can I ask follow-up to that? I'm just, I'm, can you help me understand how that sentence would be interpreted as discriminatory? To the extent possible, the committee's membership should be reflective of the town's demographics?
Oh, okay, I have no problem with that. So.
I'm just, I'm not sure what.
So we'll, we'll first start off with the demographics. So what are you going to use for demographics? That's, that's thing one. Second thing is, is with regard to age. And then, that can be considered discriminatory if you're replacing one group with another group. In other words, more weight is given to people who might be younger or older. And then thirdly, we have this household structure, which is totally vague and could possibly mean that you're trying to include people that are somehow different or have some special structure at the exclusion of other people. And to me, it's, it's a very vague statement. So I see it is, yes, we should have some, something that's reflective of the town, but I think we need to be more careful about this because right now, some people interpret this as being discriminatory. And again, you don't have, right now, that I'm aware of, anything for demographics.
I'm just, I mean, I'm not sure, some people may interpret that as discriminatory is, that's also sort of a vague rationale. I mean, I think it's fairly obvious what this is saying. I, I agree, maybe household structure needs to be defined. That's not immediately apparent what that's referring to, but I don't know, it seems pretty straightforward to me. All it's saying is the committee should represent the demographics of the town.
And it should be a myth. I think that's the point of it.
Right, I, I think that's what I was going to say, that I think, you know, we could, I, I think it's not a bad idea to reword some of the wording, but I don't think we should remove this concept. Not all of the committee language is the same. So I, I looked at the Arboretum Committee, it's the only one I had time to compare it to, but it does have some arboretum-specific language in it to encourage that people with horticultural or other similar kinds of background participate. And I think for the parks, having language to encourage a mixture and a variety of people with different kinds of interests and, and family sizes, you know, age groups within their household, so that some people will have kids, some people might be seniors, some people might be, have teenagers, some people might have younger kids, so that we get a variety of perspectives. To me, that would be very valuable for this committee, because our parks do have different users with different interests. And so maybe we just need to reword it to get across what the objective of having those, a variety of perspectives brought into the committee. And again, the language is pretty open by saying, to the extent possible, because the mayor can only appoint based on the volunteers that present themselves, and there won't always be a, a full cast of characters to choose from. We all know from experience.
Yeah, if, if I may, just, just to go on the record as well, I applaud Phil's attempt and, and, and always would welcome, you know, more precision in the language. But, but I do think, to Chris's point, you know, I, I do think that the sentiment, it doesn't sound like there's any major disagreement on the sentiment or the spirit rather of, of what this, you know, the intention of this is. Phil, and correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but I, I do think that it is valuable, what, what the intention is here, to be representative of, of the disparate groups that parks, you know, offer different things to different folks and making sure that everyone is represented. So I, I would certainly applaud, you know, looking at the language to be as concise as we can get. But I, but I do think that there is considerable value in, in having language that reflects, you know, equal representation to the extent that we're able to do that. equal representation to the extent that we're able to do that.
I don't have a problem with equal representation. It's just that the way this is set up, I think it's, it's too vague. If we can tighten it up some, then that's fine. It's just that it leave, it could leave it with certain groups being pushed out in favor of other groups. And so for that reason, I think, yes, a well-balanced committee needs to be appointed, for sure.
So, is there any other comments? What I'm hearing is that we need to work on language that articulates what we aspire to in the way of diversity, probably without a laundry list, because laundry lists always raise the question of what, what happens to what you've not included. If you don't have gender, does that mean you're not going to take it into account? And so on and so forth. Let's, let's take another run at that. My particular bias in this, which I will cheerfully disclose, is that when I was mayor before, 2008 to 2012, we had a particularly active Parks and Open Space Committee that was led by a, a very resourceful chair who went to extraordinary and inventive means to involve children in the activities, or at least the decisions and activities of the committee. I think every committee we has looks to the future in one degree or another. The Historic Preservation Committee preserves the past, so it'll still be there in the future. And the Arboretum Committee takes care of trees that were planted 50 years ago and plants trees that we hope will reach maturity in 50 years and so on. But I think the Parks Committee, more than any other, is particularly, or should be particularly oriented to our, to our younger residents. And I don't know how we get that in there. I half jokingly considered having a requirement that once a year, the committee needed to bake a batch of cookies and invite the kids in, which is how Ida did it. I, and, and again, the devil is in the details. So the wording of how we get elements of diversity and an emphasis on younger residents is something that I think warrants another month of work. Is that a fair summation where we are? Okay.
I will object to that because I believe that, yes, while younger residents are without a doubt, you know, people we should be looking at, it shouldn't necessarily be all younger residents because that now says that we don't want to favor what some of the older residents may want. I believe that we can have it for both, and we shouldn't necessarily skew towards one group. And then the other thing that I have, which I forgot to add, and I can do it later, has to do with the name. That's all.
Well, I didn't hear, I didn't hear that the mayor suggests that members of the committee should be all younger residents. I think the spirit of that comment was that the committee can prioritize engaging young people as, you know,
Actually.
regular activity. I think that the language in the, in, in the ordinance speaks to a committee that is representative of various demographics of the town. And I think the last, I mean, I don't want to put words in your mouth, mayor, but it sounded to me like the, the, what, what was said was encouraging the committee to engage with young people, young people who would obviously not necessarily be sitting members of the committee.
I would agree, but all's I'm saying is that it was favored towards younger members, and we have to remember that we have others too. That's all.
All right. Anything further?
Yes. Yes.
Sorry.
Sorry, just a quick one. I would like to add just the word "open spaces" to the name of this committee because that's what it's been all along, and it is part of what, you know, what the committee is responsible for.
Instead of just parks, he wants parks and open space.
Exactly.
Well, my only point on that is, the word advisory has to be in there.
Yes.
Because that, that's all this committee is, is advisory to the council. And that's parallel with each of the other statutory committees. And that just makes for a pretty cumbersome acronym, but I'm open to anything you want. The, the operable language, because captions and catchphrases, catch lines have no technical import, the actual operable language is the duties of the committee, which makes it clear that it's parks and open spaces. But the committee name, so long as it includes advisory, is open for discussion.
So you want it, Phil, to say Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee?
Yes.
Acceptable? Okay.
Yes, please.
I don't necessarily have an issue with that. It's been the name for a while. I would just point out that, having just had a discussion around the vagueness of terms like household structure, open spaces, I mean, there's an Arboretum Committee. There's committees that address open spaces as a broad term. It's not every open space in town. I sort of like the idea of a Parks Committee that has a very specific focus, and that's parks. If we feel it needs to be broader than that, that's fine. I just, that change made sense to me because it very specifically focused the committee's work, parks.
I think Phil was talking about the fact that this Parks and Open Space Committee has a pretty long history
Yeah.
of operating in the town.
And
Under that name.
And it is responsible for, to some extent, advising, advising on uses of open spaces, or in other words, town spaces that are not used for something else, of which there's a bunch of them, but a lot of them are little pieces here and there. Because if you want to get a future park, you know, we need to look at what open space do we have? And are we willing to allocate it? And that's something I think this advisory committee could comment on.
Elsewhere in the code, there's a definition that tries to capture every conceivable form of town-owned open space. We should probably find that. It may be in the tree portion. And see what we can do to clarify what's meant by open spaces. It's probably, it's in the, I think it's in chapter seven. All right, further discussion? So the marching orders to the staff and inferentially to ourselves is to think about the language to reflect a desire for diversity and the title.
And the definition of open space.
Well, yeah, we'll look at that and see if, see if we can't clarify that possibly by reference to an already existing definition. The other matter of unfinished business that I asked to be added to tonight's agenda has to do with the building we are sitting in. Last year, after a lot of fits and starts, we began serious efforts to get underway a long-talked-about restoration and renovation of this building. We've hired an architect. The architect is making considerable progress. And my greatest desire at this juncture is that we not lose momentum in that regard. We're at the point at which the architect needs to interact with the town from time to time to get answers to very specific questions in connection with developing the 50% plans. At the last meeting, we decided that dealing with those questions and other routine matters in connection with the renovation of the building is not susceptible of being considered by us sitting as the committee, as a committee of the whole. It's very cumbersome, time-consuming. And we determined upon an operating procedure of a smaller number, namely myself, Councilmember Paskowski, and Town Manager Matthews being the conduit for dealing with the architect. With the non-relection of Stephen Paskowski, we are very much in need of someone who can deal with Greg Weideman, who is the architect for the project, and is knowledgeable in the vocabulary and processes of an architectural undertaking of this kind. And that's not us. If he deals with a bunch of amateurs, then the cost goes up because he has to, in effect, translate things. There would be a lot more back and forth to clarify matters, and it would risk that thing which I fear most, which is losing momentum. I am therefore proposing that we hire an outside party for consultative architectural services in order to review plans and questions as they are presented to us.
And bids?
No, no, we haven't, this is strictly for the design development.
Okay.
We'll cross the next bridge when we get to it. The way I worked with Councilman Paskowski was to sit down for several hours going over the plans and Greg's questions. Stephen then translated them into architecture speak and conveyed them to Barbara, who also gives them a once-over, and forwards them to Greg. I'm going to suggest, I'm going to ask for town council authorization. This can be done by consensus if you wish, or we can vote. I can formulate it as a formal motion to negotiate a contract for those kinds of services so that we can respond promptly to the kinds of questions, an example of which was in your packet. That's the second round of questions and issues raised by Greg Weideman. As was the case in our discussion last month, we will bring anything of major import or significant financial consequence to the council. But in order to maintain the momentum and be able to respond to these kinds of inquiries promptly, I need the assistance of a registered architect.
I'd like to propose that we interview a couple people, not just Steve.
Well, here's the, here's the problem.
Whoa. I just heard a name. Have you already picked someone you want to hire to do this?
No.
Well, that's in this proposal.
There was a proposal routed?
I have, I have approached. I'm sorry?
I think I understand where the confusion is. Councilmember Bennett, there has been no name offered. Former Councilmember Paskowski's name came up when Mayor Keller was relaying the history of the project and how we previously handled things. With no longer having an architect on council, I don't think anyone's name for consideration for future review has been uttered. I think it was just like a project history.
Okay, so how are we going to select this person? And how much are we going to pay them?
I've spoken with Stephen Paskowski about his willingness to consider continuing simply in that consultative role with me. He just lost the election a week ago. So he needs to think about it. I would ask that I be given authority to negotiate, initially with him, if he's willing, and to cap an hourly rate at not to exceed $175 an hour.
Did you consider, Mayor, putting out a call for volunteers or asking any of our new council members if they are interested in taking on project management roles? That we, we've hired an architect. They should be able to speak to us, the client, in plain language.
Well, if, if any council member is comfortable communicating with Greg on the kinds of architectural issues he raises from time to time, it's averaged every two or three weeks, and he is raising it on behalf of subcontractors with whom he is already dealing, I would certainly consider that. It requires investment of time, familiarity with architectural vocabulary, and the ability to turn it around in fairly short order.
Well, we have a number of architects and builders in town who would certainly know how to deal with this, who live in Garrett Park.
And what is your proposal?
Well, I just think we should just open up the range of who we're talking about, asking. Well, first, I guess the first question is, from your experience with the last time, this last iteration with you working with Steve, going over the plans with Greg, were you satisfied that you thought he'd be a good person to do? I mean, it's, you know, because I think that would be an important question.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think if we got anyone who has not been previously associated with this project, the first thing they would have to do is begin reading the literature, starting with the 2018 report that Stephen drafted, going on to the 2021 report that he largely drafted with the help of the Historic Preservation Committee.
But my, my point is that before jumping to hiring a consultant to manage our consultant, that we at least do our due diligence to see if we have any volunteers in town. We have a Historic Preservation Committee. We have a lot of residents who may, may, may or may not volunteer to help with the project management, but we won't know unless we ask.
And what, what timeframe are we talking about?
Before the next town council meeting.
That's a month.
Yeah.
Greg sent his most recent set of questions last Friday.
Right. And they didn't seem that complex if somebody were actually inside the building with him and could see what he was referring to, or, or looking at the, the drawings. Most of those were not that complex, the questions. There were a very few that seemed to be of a technical nature.
It's also not a very big complicated project. I mean, it's just a little building. I think we're just making it a lot more complex than it needs to be.
That is my concern as well. And I also think we have, the Historic Preservation Committee may have great interest in this. So it just seems to me, checking with our potential volunteer resources before immediately going to a contract position would be prudent.
I wholeheartedly agree.
The town spent north of $90,000 on a consultant on the sidewalk project after it was already Was any effort made to find volunteers for that position before the decision was made?
Yes, that, that, that decision was made, and I, I think there were a lot of lessons discussed after the fact at the cost issues related to that. But that decision was made to alleviate the burden on one volunteer in particular who was, you know, a little overwhelmed.
I do think there's some, I mean, I, I appreciate any opportunity for volunteers to help be involved in any project and help move things along. I think there is something to be said, regardless of who it is, for paying someone for work and technical expertise. And what sounds like maybe not a tremendous amount of money. I don't know if there's an estimate on sort of the number of hours that might be needed per, for example, this email that came through, but I do believe that there's value and you get, and sometimes you get the most out of people if you are paying them for their time and their expertise and, and stuff like this, so.
I understand that point, but we're paying Mr. Weideman. And, and my problem with this concept is we're adding a third party in. And Mr. Weideman is the architect and we are the client. And if we were hiring somebody, they would just be a further representative of the client's perspective. But now they're a separate paid consultant. And so I just think that we ought to make sure that we have Mr. Reden, Weideman, explaining in plain language what he's proposing to the client, the town. And if the town needs to solicit to have a proper committee managing the project, which has been a time-honored tradition in town, then we should do that. It just so happened that we had for this committee, three town officials, but we haven't made an effort to solicit and see if there are any other town residents who might be interested in being more involved. There have been other major construction projects in town where they solicited committees, such as the Penn Place project, or even the park, the sidewalk project in its initial planning, where there were volunteers who were very interested in helping to represent the needs of the clients.
I mean, and the person who was doing it before was volunteer, and all of a sudden we're told we have to pay. I mean, I think that's another thing to consider. I mean, especially when you look at, you know, during the election, we talked about people, you know, drawing on our tremendous base of knowledge within the town itself. And there are some people, I think, who could do that work if we absolutely needed it. But again, I agree with Jerry Lee. It's like, you know, they should, our architect should be able to explain to us what exactly he's looking for, boil it down into language that the average layperson could understand. I mean, I can probably understand more than a lot, but nevertheless, it really should be, questions should be asked in plain language.
Well, that sounds.
I'm just very concerned about having dueling architects paid for by the town. That, it's a very concerning prospect to me.
We're, we're not really injecting another level. We're replacing a missing person in the three-member group that we agreed last month should carry things forward. What I hear from Phil is that we go back to managing this as a committee of the whole. Having Greg Weideman describe to us in layman's terms some of the technical questions he's asked in various inquiry letters. Is that what we want to do? We want to step back? Do have a.
No, I'm sorry, I couldn't get myself off mute. I am suggesting that, yes, we could consider having somebody consult with us in terms of some of the language. However, I don't, I think we need to look to see who's in town who could do it. And I do believe that if the architect can't go back to the committee, and yes, the committee probably needs a replacement member, but if the architect can't explain to the committee what the question is, then how do we know that the consultant's going to give us the same answer, it's going to be the right answer, because we don't understand what the question is?
You lost me.
Okay.
Okay. Is it the consensus of the council that we set aside the most recent list of inquiries from Greg Weideman pending an effort to find a volunteer who will replace Stephen Paskowski as the third member of the Oversight Committee? And bring architectural expertise to bear on county, on, on town responses to architect inquiries? That's essentially what we're asking.
Would Steve, did Steve say he won't do it unless we pay him?
No, of course not.
So maybe we should ask Steve if he wants to be one of these considered volunteers?
No.
No.
What, what do you mean?
I'm sorry?
What you mean by no, somebody said no, I.
I'm following the example set by the council with respect to the sidewalk project, where in the course of the project, an outside consultant was hired to provide consultative services.
Yes, that is correct. And just like Jerry Lee had said, that person was mandated to unload a lot of work with regard to filing with the state and so forth to kind of keep things moving there. It was mainly a paper pushing exercise in terms of somebody who was familiar with the state and, and the documentation that needed to be filed or attended to or kept up to date.
Greg Weideman should be able to do that.
Well, I think the analogy here is that, is that Stephen Paskowski has existing familiarity with this building and the project so far. And what I heard earlier was that we not limit the range of volunteers we seek, but that we go to the town as a whole.
That was my recommendation. I, I want to be clear that I'm not commenting at all on any potential sources you, you might have talked to. I, but I just think that the town ought to look at its potential for a volunteer committee first before seeking to hire a consultant to manage a consultant.
I'm going to ask Steve if he wants to be on that committee as a volunteer.
Well, how, how do we do that? Do we put out a broadcast request for expressions of interest in the same way we do for other projects?
That's what I would recommend, and, and specifically make sure that you share it with your members of your Historic Preservation and your Land Use Advisory Committees.
And the architects that we know in town. And Barb, could you send me a copy of, because I don't see it, a copy of the questions that Greg Weideman proposed? Because maybe that should be something we send to these proposed.
Yeah. And Lisa, it's part of my town manager's report. It's attached to that. It's, it's sort of a progress report and issues that they were looking for guidance on.
And it's part of.
It's at the end of.
Yeah, the end of my town manager's report.
Okay, great. So I would attach that and show people, these are the kinds of things that we, we're looking for expertise on to address.
Well, I am curious, Mr. Mayor, like, which of these questions do you think are not really just about client preference? And which are more of a technical nature that we need the advice of a technical professional? You know, because a, a number of these are really design preferences about placement of light switches and things like that.
I, I haven't parsed them individually.
You know, and some of them are about carpeting, you know, carpeting, wood floor versus vinyl floor. Those are really design preferences, not technical issues. If we boiled it down to the technical issues, the amount of hours that we might need to engage a technical person, even a vol, whether it's volunteer or paid, could be pretty limited. And I think, you know, just boiling those technical issues down and asking Mr. Weideman to explain the pros and cons in plain language, we might find it's not as complex as it appears on its surface, is, just seems to me.
His second point's a good example. He engineers prepared preliminary draft of the HVAC plan for our review. So I guess the question becomes, do we feel competent to evaluate an HVAC plan? Or would it be helpful to have?
Well, Weideman should be able to do that.
And yes, I do it professionally, HVAC, that is.
So what's the bottom line here? We defer responding to Weideman pending an effort to find a volunteer from town residents?
Well, there's probably a, a middle that involves answering what we can. I mean, I, I agree with you on keeping the momentum and not losing too much time and.
Right. Well, so, so.
Keeping the whole town.
Right. And, and I agree. I'm, I'm sorry, Chris, please finish.
No, 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 go ahead.
I, I agree, it's not efficient to have the committee of, of the whole trying to decide all these things. But some of these questions are design questions, and some of them are technical. At least for the design ones, when you advertise for a committee member, that's something I think that's important to make clear, because I really think that, in particular, maybe our Historic Preservation Committee members or others in the community may have great interest in having the opportunity to influence whether or not we have wall-to-wall carpet or whether or not the light switches are here or there. And then, so you could split out a, a small technical flow of questions and your design-related questions. So you could solicit a, solicit and, and ask people to say what their interest is in, in helping out with the project.
Yeah, there's not much here that's really technical. It's, it's a lot of aesthetic questions, really.
Well, I suppose there are two ways of looking at that. If we open up aesthetic questions to the community as a whole, I think we can guarantee we won't get a lot.
Yes, that's my point. But you're, you're, you're trying to appoint a small committee to make those decisions on behalf of the town. I remember the last time the town hall was renovated, I, I think council member at that time, Chris Fishman, undertook that, those design considerations. I think she did a great job. You only need one or two people, and that's why I was suggesting perhaps asking, particularly inviting the Historic Preservation Committee to submit a volunteer for that portion, if they're interested. I agree, you need a small group to make the decisions, but the, a person you might ask for helping to translate the, the technical is not necessarily the right person to ask to help make design decisions on behalf of the town.
Yeah, a lot of these.
Or aesthetic, yeah.
A lot of these questions on his list don't really require the expertise of an architect. You know, refilling the wood floors, removing an existing window, should it be operable or non-operable? I mean, they're not tremendously technical questions. But I do think we should have a small committee looking at these questions and moving it forward. And I think we should find somebody who wants to do it.
Agreed.
Okay, we should find somebody who wants to do it. What does that mean? That means a, a broadcast advertisement to the community as a whole.
And to the Historic Preservation Committee and some of the architects and builders in town that we know.
Well, I, I'm not going to pick individual people to approach.
Okay.
Because once we get away from Stephen Paskowski, we can't, we, we don't know the, the background that they bring. I think it has to be community-wide.
Okay. But we can say that we want somebody who has architectural and construction expertise to help us.
Or interior design, or, you know, there are a number of.
Right.
Possibilities, project management.
All right. Well, are you willing to draft a notice?
I'll be happy to volunteer to do that.
So, short-term, we'll notify Greg that it'll be a while before we can get back to him. And we will seek from the community at large, a replacement for the third person on the committee to handle these things going forward. Is that a fair statement of the upshot here?
Yeah, but I think we should select that person based on their expertise and experience, knowledge.
Well, I assume if we draft the right notice, only those who qualify will apply.
Amidst all that, is it possible to get some of these answers back to them? I mean, some of these, some of these, I think, there's a question about when the roof was replaced, which we may be able to, you know, it's like.
We have that.
What can we do to keep the momentum going? I mean, this is an email. He's, he's sort of waiting on responses, obviously, at, he's our.
Yeah, and part of it is, I had asked Mr. Weideman to send me something before each town council meeting. So you are sort of in the loop of what is happening and the progress.
Okay.
Just documenting what.
So he's not necessarily sitting around waiting.
Not, not at all.
Okay.
Not on most, not on most of these things. I know that, and the mayor and I will know more about this in the morning. I think there are certain elements that we'll want to go ahead and take to a consultation meeting with either the Maryland Historic Trust and/or the County Historic Preservation Staff. So I think that's somewhat leading to the meeting we're having tomorrow morning to talk about what exactly he needs in order to do that.
Well, that might help to illuminate than what we need to answer those.
Yeah.
I mean, in the new rear hall, what flooring would you like? Carpet, vinyl, or wood? Should it match the parlor? I mean, that's a totally aesthetic question. So who is it that's going to make that decision?
Yes and no. I mean, it also has to do with patterns of movement.
Yeah, how we're going to use the space and noise and all that. But my question is, who would, on this little committee that you're talking about, going back to Greg, are you talking about the committee?
Well, wait a minute. I'm not talking about a little committee. That was the consensus. Well, wait a minute. I'm not talking about a little committee. That was the consensus we reached at the last meeting. I thought everyone bought into that as the most efficient way to go forward.
But my question is, are you going to give Greg the answers to his questions? Such as, what kind of flooring do we want in the rear, a new rear hall?
No, not until I, not until I have a more knowledgeable person tell me the appropriate material for that area.
Okay.
Based on the fact that it has people coming on occasions when the backyard is used, coming directly from the exterior.
But do you think Greg Weidemann could make it? I mean, I, you know, I would ask the architect. What do you think, sir? You know, I mean, I just, I guess the point is, I don't think there's a right or wrong answer. I think there's just a decision that needs to be made. And the question is, who's in the position to make those decisions on behalf of the project?
Well, we could devolve it all back to Greg. The notion at the last meeting was that we should have a say in that.
Right. We still need someone to represent the client's interest, and that is our two to four person committee. And I just leave it open there a little bit in case you get, you know, two great volunteers and you want to expand it beyond three. But I think you do need someone to represent the client's interest. But I do think also, we should be expecting our architect to explain the pros and cons and not just give us an open ended question with no context.
Correct. I agree.
Who else? Is there anyone who's volunteered for the committee other than, I know Stephen was?
And, and the mayor and Barb.
Yeah. And if I may, I, I think Greg Weidemann is more than prepared to give a recommendation. I think he's had experience with this organization and with this community that wants to be involved in decision makings. And I would view his questions as being respectful, not in any way that he's not capable of making a recommendation, because he certainly is.
Right. That's another approach with him, is to let him know, moving, you know, we want to see his best attempt at a design that captures the spirit of this town as he knows it through the work he's done with us and present it to us in all its glory. And then we can, if there's something that we don't like, revise it.
And the mayor and I.
Or at least give us the pros and, pros and cons of the options.
And I think the question, I think the mayor is somewhat posing is, once we have these pros and cons, who do they come back to? And who basically provides that guidance? Because there's certain things that came up, such as, you know, we have, it was one of the issues that I know the mayor discussed with former council member Paskowski. You know, this building has certain things that are powered by, by gas. I know our maintenance supervisor, George Miller, feels like moving to all electric would be replacing units that don't have to be replaced. There's also the perspective that should they be evaluating electric to see, is that cheaper in the long run? And that does affect their subcontractors and what their subcontractors are contracted to do. So I think, not to speak for Mayor Keller, but I know we're trying to basically figure out, how do we get Greg Weidemann and his firm, the answers that they need to keep things moving? Some of the things, as you all are noting, are simply design choices and are probably that, not that material right now in terms of the next stage of their work. Other things are, where they're making, you could argue that, should they be approaching MHT and county historic preservation about removing a window? That is somewhat a design preference, but I think that's also something I believe he's assuming that the town may wish to weigh in on before they start talking to MHT about that and, and seeing if that's going to fly. So I do think there's different gradations of issues that are coming up in his questions. But he's certainly more than happy, I'm sure, to, to provide a firm recommendation. I think what he wants to know is, who was authorized to give him that direction and that input?
Right.
And I think, you know, as of the last meeting, I had shared with him kind of who the building committee is. Obviously, there's been a material change. And we're trying to figure out, what does that look like today? So that we can give Greg that guidance.
Yeah, and maybe Steve will want to do it.
So it sounds as though if you move forward with soliciting some expertise from the town, you're looking, I would make, you know, one person with architecture design, building experience, and one person with maybe an interior design perspective, submit to the council sort of, you know, why you want to do this and what some of your qualifications are. If you check out.
You can do it.
Be a part of it. And then, you know, as needed, interior design, we ask that person to weigh in. Architecture, that person weighs in, and we just keep things moving. I mean, but I would say if we're going to do that, we can get it out quickly. But maybe, but I, I would caution against going.
Too big.
And Gerald Lee, I would just attach these questions from Greg as an example of what we're looking for from this person, this volunteer.
And Gerald Lee, it may be helpful for us to kind of circle back around with you, since you so kindly offered to help draft something after we have the meeting with Greg tomorrow. If that works for you.
Sure.
You're meeting with Greg tomorrow to go over more design questions?
To touch base on some of the issues that are there.
Okay.
All right. Do we have an overall timeframe in which we would like to have this resolved? By the next council meeting? Is that what I heard earlier?
I would hope so.
Not earlier, not later?
Yeah, I mean, I think you could advertise within a week or so, you give a two week timeframe to solicit.
I would agree with.
After two weeks.
I would agree with that.
To what degree do you think that pre-existing familiarity with this building should play a role, if any?
I think that could be useful, but I don't think, I personally think you shouldn't be overly limiting to, because you might scare away volunteers who have perfectly good expertise and could bring in some positive perspective if you insist that they have lots of familiarity with the building.
All right. Anything further on this issue?
The only thing I'd say is I might caution against sending these questions out in this solicitation. Because then you're, you're, I wonder if that then leads to more people who just want to kind of offer their perspective and may not. You know, this is just a kind of a sampling of of the issues that might come up.
Right.
What the gist of it is, we need someone with a real architectural background or structural engineering background to help us make sense of the plans as they get more complex moving forward, and someone with an interior design perspective. I wonder if that's enough to get.
Well, I was just, I just think this is a good example of the kinds of questions that they should anticipate. But you don't, you can pick and choose a couple of them, Gerald Lee, if you want, or just describe what we're looking for.
I think perhaps the broader recitation of the skills that we were looking for might be more useful. And then for anyone who responded, we could show them the first round, which had Greg's questions, our responses, and the second round. And that would give them a flavor of the range of things that come up.
That's a good idea.
As well as our previous response, so they'll understand the format. All right. So we'll try to get that notice out as soon as possible. Anything further? New business, I'd like to handle this as quickly as possible. In the past, it was traditional for the town council, the mayor and the staff to hold an organizational meeting shortly after an election, especially an election in which there was turnover in membership of the council. That would include things, organizational things such as liaison assignments and other interest areas, conduct of meetings and so on. Preferably not tacked on to the end of a long, regular meeting. And in the past, they were in fact retreats, meaning they were held other than at town hall. In the 90s, prior to the town's renovation of Penn Place, there was an affirmative effort made to hold these at sister municipalities who had had analogous construction done. For example, we met at MacArthuran Hall in Washington Grove and got some ideas for what we wanted to do with Penn Place. And in fact, got the name of their architect and ended up using him. And it's the same individual who's helping us here.
Greg Weidemann?
Greg Weidemann. Barb observed that the town of Chevy Chase has recently done something with one of their municipal buildings, so we might reach out to them.
Yeah, I was just in it. And also Bannockburn has a really nice community center they redid with a warming kitchen in.
Virginia?
Bannockburn, Maryland.
Oh, Maryland.
Yeah, it's right off of River Road.
Oh, okay.
Right by Glen Echo.
So I guess my question to you is, and since that would be unlikely to, to take terribly long, we could also use that occasion to have a more in-depth discussion of the land use issues that we've tended to sort of have discussion in the course of a regular meeting. It's hurried. It isn't informed by any outside expertise. And we could specifically address that in a council meeting work session.
Okay.
So my question to you is, if you feel that would be useful and worthwhile? And if so, when should we do it? Any thoughts?
Do you want to do it in June?
It isn't, it isn't a question of what I want to do.
Well, when does the committee want to, I mean, how soon do you think?
What we would, what we would do is if, if the council feels this would be a useful and worthwhile undertaking, we would approach George Martin, who's an architect and the head of our land use committee. And perhaps one other person who could help us understand the definitional and operational issues that are central to our consideration of our own land use regulations. So it would need to be a date that would be convenient for George, and as I say, perhaps one other individual.
I'm happy to do it.
So.
I think it would be useful. I think it would be, just for me, if it's, if July is feasible, that June is quickly filling up. For a lot of people. But yeah, no, I think it would be, it would be useful, for sure.
Yeah, I think we, my preference would be to do it within the next two calendar months, if possible.
Yep.
So I gather there's general agreement. Do Jerry Lee or Phil have any views on this?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to do it. Maybe put a doodle poll out for some options. Because, you know, obviously people have summer vacations and things.
I will second that opinion. I, I think it's a good idea to do it. Yeah, doodle polls have worked well in the past.
Okay. Barb presented us here, I don't know, were you able to get this to the others?
No, I have not yet.
Okay. Barb presented us here with a number of potential meeting dates in late May and June. They are all weekdays. In some cases, the council retreats have been on a Saturday. I think the most recent one was a Saturday. Is that correct? Last October?
No, that was during the week.
That was, I believe, a Friday, actually.
It was a Friday.
To accommodate the.
I stand corrected.
I could see some confusion. To be clear, the list of dates was not copied and full for everyone. We just nailed it down shortly before town manager Matthews and I came over for the meeting.
I would still need to check with George Martin about his availability.
Okay.
This is mostly looking at when town hall is available. We do have a number of evening and weekend rentals throughout this season. We are coming up on graduation season in addition to the regular weddings, birthdays.
We could also do it in Penn Place in the conference room.
That is another option.
And then not interrupt the rental of this space.
Does anyone want to address any of these specific dates in terms of probably?
Mayor Keller, they don't have a copy of it.
They don't have, they don't have the days.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought.
The list of dates when town hall is available in late May and early June, we have identified Wednesday, May 28th as an option. Monday, June 2nd. Wednesday, June 11th. Monday, June 16th. Wednesday, June 18th, or Wednesday, June 25th. I do want to highlight that June 25th is the last day of the MML conference. And we do have at least three confirmed people going.
Okay, I apologize, I misunderstood. So maybe the thing to do is touch base with George first, George Martin.
And then send out the doodle poll.
And then circulate a number of potential dates to the council as a whole.
I will do that. If any of you have like vacations planned where you'll be gone for a considerable period of time, if you could just shoot me an email, so I don't even include those dates basically in the options. So we'll also book some dates in July as well.
I'm.
That would be great. How many? Sorry, Lisa, did you get to finish?
Yeah.
I was just wondering, how many hours are we estimating this will take?
The typical pattern has been to meet from mid-morning, have lunch, and adjourn in mid-afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
Keep in mind that at least potentially a broad ranging discussion of land use issues and getting a firmer understanding of some of the recurring issues could shorten the time we need to spend when those issues come up in these regular meetings. So there might be at least a small trade-off. Okay, shall we proceed at least to the point of talking about dates after Barb has had a chance to talk with George Martin?
Yeah, and I want to apologize, Mayor Keller. I was looking, assuming that it would be a several hour long meeting in the evening. So I need to go back and look at these dates again to make sure there's nothing in town hall.
But if the town hall is booked, can't we also just have, is there a reason we have to have it in the town hall? Or could we have it in Penn Place in the conference room?
I will point out that the last time that we had an organization retreat, I actually apologize, that was two years ago. When we were over at Glenview, we did have members of the public who attended. This is going to be a public meeting. While we could comfortably fit the people who are sitting at the table here tonight, it might get a little bit snug if both council member Bennett and council member Schulp are joining us in person. That is kind of an eight person conference room if you.
I didn't realize it was a public meeting.
It is a public meeting. I think the other consideration, and I don't, I don't have a preference either way, is, you know, this is something you want in a hybrid format, because if you do, that makes it difficult when we go off. when we go off-location as well. I went back and was just looking to see how long the organizational meeting lasted in 2024. Obviously, that was very narrowly focused. Well, it had one other item on it, I guess, it was public comments. And you also dealt with at that time, the reconfiguration of the Kinnell Worth Argo intersection. That meeting started at 7:31 and ended at 9:08.
So it was a couple hours.
Well, the retreat, the retreat in October of '23.
Lasted all day, basically.
Was like 10 to 4.
Correct, so I think it depends what you want to cover at the meeting.
But that meeting isn't for Penn Place, for these questions for Greg and the architect? You just want to focus on land use questions?
And organizational.
Okay.
And any, any sort of overarching issues that, that involve a confluence of policy and operational questions. I mean, communication is probably the prime example of that sort of thing. Okay. Town updates, I have three individuals who are interested in serving on a very short-term working group regarding demolitions. Ideally, we should wait until we get the assignment of the Town Council Liaison for Historic Preservation, which is currently vacant. But I may just start them on basic research, pending that. It's a short-term, closed-end, largely research initiative to simply look at what, if anything, we can do about demolitions.
About not having them.
About further circumscribing them, yes.
Right.
It may lead inevitably to other things, but, but we can just take it one step at a time. Phil, did you want to report on the Archives Committee?
Sure, let me just try and make this relatively quick. So, the archivist is reporting that they've trans, that transferred remaining 10 MP3 files, which basically are recordings of interviews, oral history interviews, that have been done. Originally, they're on cassette, now they're being sent on MP3 files to Joe May. He runs it through a transcar, transcribing program. And then, once that's done, he edits the output to make it usable. So it looks like the remaining 10 MP files, three files are out there. She has communicated with the former Penn Place tenants, Mr. and Mrs. Weiner, submitted a collection management policy to the Archives President for approval to be added to the next meeting along with forms reporting damages to an object. A lot of this has to do with requests from the Archivist, or requests to the Archivist for supplying materials, and then also how to deal with the materials as are being handled by, say, a person from the public or not, as the case may be. And there would actually be a form that we're looking at doing now to make it easier for the Archivist to figure out what needs to be done, what material might need to be pulled. And Archivist is per, is in the process of going through the Marion Green personal papers, which many may know Marion Green is a longtime resident, had a lot of good influence on the town, and had a lot of interesting paperwork. And so, we're trying to figure out what to save and what not. Also, working on the next exhibit, which will be on the town's librarian, Laura Payne, and updating the past perfect photographs file with metadata, so that makes it easier to search and use. And she supported the town staff with scanning town council minutes from August 2018 meeting. And that is it, thank you.
Thank you. I realized I jumped immediately to town updates. Was there any further new business for this evening? All right. Not an update, but just a plug, shameless plug, for the Spring Tree Walk. The Arboretum Committee sponsors two walks a year, once in the fall, one in the spring, led by Phil Normandy, who is not only a superb arborist, but has a terrific sense of humor. It's, it's a fun afternoon.
It's a great afternoon. I'll be out of town, but it's a great thing to do.
Sunday, May 18th at 1:00 p.m. at Town Hall.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, we start on this side of town, the non-neglected south side. If there's nothing further, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Very good, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.